Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Regular Public Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 29, 2025. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
Oh, we have a car. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM Tuesday, November 26, 2025, and Wednesday, excuse me, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you to everyone who is here tonight and to all of our board members. It's our first regular public meeting of the month, and we are, you know, back from the holiday season. We have a lot going on within the district, and tonight specifically, we have a presentation. So, at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Shiroka.
Thank you, Madam President. Every year, we are required to have a financial audit, and we are lucky enough to have our audit turned in on time, completely done, to the state on time, and have Mr. Stankiewicz from the Sam Klein and Company come and present our audit findings.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Stankiewicz, Samuel Klein and Company. We are the appointed independent lenders for the district for the year ending June 30, 2024.
Do you mind picking up the microphone and speaking into it? It helps them hear.
County 30th?
Yep, exactly. It just helps them hear it better. Thank you.
We were appointed by the board to perform an audit of the district's records, which are maintained by the business office, headed by Rosa, and our job is to give an opinion on the records as presented to us. Okay, we're happy to report that we have an unmodified, previously known as a clean opinion, previously known before that as an unqualified opinion on the records that were presented. What does that mean? It means basically that the numbers that were given through the various computer reports, general ledgers, revenue reports, present fairly the statement of the status of the district's financial position, okay? And the records were presented, as we call them in what's called a tick mark fashion, meaning we really had no adjustments to make. There were no adjustments that were made because we found a boo-boo, okay? That didn't happen. Everything was presented perfectly, as it has been for the past several years, okay? And basically, what it means is this: We do independent, we do an independent test, random samples of various items, most especially payroll and expenditures. So, we get all good auditing results from those, meaning for payroll, everyone was paid properly, in accordance with more authorization, payroll taxes were paid timely, okay? Expenditures, properly documented, four most important things: Properly documented, cut off properly throughout the fiscal year, charts are the right budget code, and especially of compliance with the Publicable Contracts Law. You know, during the year, you do a lot of resolutions, authorizing different purchases and things. Well, you're pretty well in compliance with the Publicable Contracts Law, and you do take good advantage, I think, of the various purchasing co-ops that are out there. Now, obviously, you go a bit on certain things, like construction, which is pretty much what most districts do now, because everything that's available now for a school is available through cooperative purchasing, whether the county or some of the ones up in New Jersey, they're all like, you know, the Morris County one or whatever that you join, a lot of this stuff is all available. The vendors have gotten through to the state treasury department to show their products, so they agree upon a price, and it works very nicely for the district. So, we got all good auditing results from that, and most importantly, and it's technical in nature, and that is, the cash on your general ledger that's presented to us agrees to the bank reconciliation, okay? Just accept it, okay? I will say this: Some districts I go to, they don't, and that's a problem, but in here, and that's been the case here, okay? We end up with an unmodified opinion because the district has procedures in place and people positioned to enforce those procedures, which is why we end up with a good audit result in the end, okay? So, it's called an unmodified opinion. And as a result of our successful testing, there's no comments contained in the thinner of the two documents, which is really our representation to the board, okay, about the operation of the district. We were in compliance with everything. The ASSA counts worked nicely. We're in compliance with the Department of Agriculture rule on excess surplus in your proprietary fund, your food service fund. All the bank recs, like I said, that's important that they tie, and we believe that there's, you know, you're in compliance with and have good people in positions, compliance with the grants, okay? So, we're very comfortable in giving a clean opinion. Just for record, the thicker of the two documents, we actually produced, but it's a joint venture with us and the business office, okay? We're given the numbers, certain pieces are worked on by the business office, other pieces we put together because it's a little more technical, but this is a joint venture. The only thing inside this document that belongs to us is our opinion, which is, you know, unmodified. So, the other thing is, the good thing about your records being presented properly is that on or about July 1st or thereabouts, your business office could indicate to you, okay, this is what our fund balance is. Well, we're seven months later, and it's still the same number, okay? Because we do chip away at certain things in the summer, back and forth on the computer on the telephone, so the main exhibit is the C1 exhibit, which is your main operating fund. So, normally, by midsummer, we know those numbers, and they haven't changed, again, because everything is done correctly along the way. So, we're happy to report that there's a unmodified, with no comments or recs, and I do want to publicly thank the business office and all the people in the support staff who helped us along the way in the various departments. We do, we do get to meet a lot of people and talk to them, even if it's for a half hour, just to, you know, get a feel for what they're doing, to make sure everything's in compliance, so. And the enrollment count, I might add, too, is also right on the money, so. I'm here, if there's any questions, we're very happy to be here tonight, and yes, we filed the ONSOM, which is electronic version of the audit on time, actually in the early December, okay, like we planned, and then the audit was filed on July, excuse, January 10. The due date was January 15, and that was a result of some pushing and prodding that we discussed about, you know, it could be a little more timely, so we got that all out of the way. So, that's where we are. If you have any questions, I'm here, but the only thing that, the only action the board needs to take is just, is to accept the audit. You don't need a plan of action because there was no items that were recommended for correction. Usually, though, if there is a problem, we address it right away, correct? I mean, many phone calls, okay, do it this way, don't do it that way. So, it's not like we come here, and the good thing about it is, is that the system here is set up so that we don't catch the audit, the problem that your internal people catch it before it gets out to the public. So, also, we had an exit conference with the administration about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, to issue the audit, and then there was a rather extensive meeting with the Business Operations Committee, what was it, last Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, last Wednesday, to discuss and further detail the audit. So, we're happy to be here, and if there's any questions, we're here to address them, and if when I leave here, there's questions, you can address them through the superintendent administrator, and we'll give you whatever audit answers you need.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have anything for Mr. Stankiewicz to follow up?
Jerry, I would just like to echo your thanks to the business office, to you and your staff for all the work this year, getting that done and keeping to our timeline. We really appreciate it, and, you know, great job again. Thank you.
I'm good?
Yes, sir. Are you good, Jerry? I'm good. Thank you.
Not this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too. And thank you again for collaboration as well, Rosa and your team. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It was a team effort, for sure.
Absolutely. All right, so at this time, we will open it up to a public comment on the audit presentation. If anyone from the public would like to come up and speak to anything discussed in the audit, now is the time. Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion for the audit presentation? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Mr. Legori, would you please take item eight?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the school district of North Brunswick Township for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, and the accompanying auditor's management report on the administrative funding, financial compliance, and performance, also for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. This also includes the system peer review report conducted on Samuel Klein and Company.
Thank you. Can we have a second? Was that Mr. Carter or Mr. Wen?
Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I'm going to take roll call on this one. Mr. Ali.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Singh.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
And Mr. Wen.
Yes.
The audit report is accepted. Thank you. Ms. Keith, would you please take item nine?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes: Regular public meeting minutes, December 18, 2024; Executive meeting minutes, December 18, 2024; Reorganization meeting minutes, January 7, 2025; Board to retreat meeting minutes, January 9, 2025; Board to retreat executive minutes, January 9, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Is anyone opposed? All the meeting minutes are accepted. Thank you. All right, at this time, are there any communications?
There are not this evening.
Okay. We'll move to reports. I'm assuming we can just jump to your administrative?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. As I mentioned at our reorganization meeting earlier this month, January is School Board Recognition Month. Recognizing our school board members is an important way to thank current and former board members for their dedication and service on behalf of their communities. Our nine North Brunswick Township school board members, just like all school board members in New Jersey, receive no pay for their service. Although elected, these dedicated school board members provide countless hours of volunteer service to our school district and community in order to help North Brunswick Township schools be the best that they can be. In North Brunswick, we are exceptionally grateful for our school board of professional, hard-working individuals who work collaboratively as a team in a positive manner. Thank you all for your service to the students, families, and staff of North Brunswick. If we could all give them a round of applause. Also, as a reminder, we have an early closing next Thursday, February 6, 2025, for staff professional learning. In addition, we all have an early closing for staff and students on Friday, February 14, not for Valentine's Day, but because it's pre-President's Day weekend, and schools will also be closed on Monday, February 17 for President's Day. On this evening's agenda is a vote to approve Ms. Marcy Marks as the 9 to 12 supervisor of special education. Ms. Marks is here in the audience this evening, and I'd like to invite her up for a second to say a few words.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the Board of Education, the district, and the school administration for believing in my new reassignment. As a proud alumni of MBTHS as a school district teacher for 25 years, I am committed to student excellence, and I kind of hit the ground on it. I'm looking forward to working with staff, students, and all the families in my neighborhood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. As most of you know, I have also shared the news of my retirement on June 30 with the board, district staff, and families. At this time, I am focused more on upcoming work for the district through the rest of the school year, and I will save any additional remarks to the community on this topic at the June meeting. Finally, as I explained at our last meeting, we have a referendum vote for school facility improvements on March 11. We will be launching information beginning tomorrow, well, actually, tonight, and as part of that launch, I'd like to share now the video that was put together by our communications team, and to thank Mr. Wen for coming out and being willing to appear in the referendum video. Thank you. Dr. Kane Ellis, our district coordinator of communications, for all the work she did behind the scenes for the website, the communications plan, and so on. And Mr. Jason Swain, our media teacher at the high school, for his video editing expertise and filming expertise. And my secretary, Janine Kirschewski, for all her work in Canva in preparing and helping put together all the marketing materials. So, I'm going to take a second and see if we can get this to go. Did practice this before, so. It's about five minutes long, so just be ready.
So, today, we're here to talk about the upcoming referendum on March 11 for school facility improvements. We have an opportunity to put toward the voters a referendum to improve our facilities in the schools. So, this is the perfect time for a referendum. You know, as a district, the board has looked very carefully about the idea of being the stewards of our tax dollars. We have money coming off the books from debt we have paid, even paying our mortgage for previous projects that the voters approved 20-something years ago, and that money is coming off the books, and it's the best time to reinvest it in our district because we can do it at zero cost to our taxpayer and pay a lot of impact in improving our schools, and at the same time, get 40% from the state. So, we're not paying 100% of these projects later down the road at some breaks on an emergent basis. We've worked extensively with our Board of Education, our architect, the campus owner, and our administration over the last year and a half. We've done building facility reviews with the principals, gone through every nook and cranny of our buildings, and prioritized projects that we needed to do that were vital to the safety and health of our students.
Over the past few years, you know, we constantly hear about times when the heating system will break down, cooling system breaks down, and the students, you know, they go into a classroom where it's 50 degrees, or they go into a classroom that's, you know, 80-something, 90 degrees, and it is very difficult to learn there. And, you know, I know administration constantly scrambles to either provide portable units or they have to move the classrooms to different areas of the school to accommodate, and, you know, moving classrooms and moving students around or trying to learn inside rooms, extreme targets, is very difficult, and it really leads to a loss of learning opportunities and learning time.
You know, the essential units are still, you know, some of them are 50 years old, boilers, and some of them are 25-plus years old. If you think about your house and your air conditioning unit, you know, you want to have it maintained every year, which we do, if you have a 25-year life expectancy in your house, you're going to be pretty worried next month or winter when things happen. There are two questions to this referendum, both of which are at zero cost to taxpayers. The first one is $52 million, and that one includes HVAC improvements throughout the district, and the majority of our buildings, new boilers, new air conditioning units. The units in most of our elementary schools are called MR units. It also includes workhorse, making sure that the envelope of the building is watertight. It also includes ADA compliant bathrooms, so that our students and staff can have safe and updated bathrooms. That's the first question. The second question is just over $11 million, and that one is for windows and door replacements. So, our windows are not necessarily double-pane or energy efficient, and our doors are all sorts of different mixed match doors, they aren't compliant to safety, and our locks as well, so we want to make sure they are the most safe and best quality that our students can use.
These items that are part of the referendum are things that are part of facility updates that also qualify for state aid. So, the things that are part of this referendum all qualify for 40% coverage from the state so that we don't have to foot the full bill, and this only happens when we do a referendum like this. So, this is the opportunity that we have to have the state help us pay for a lot of these facility improvements while we make these changes for the betterment of the district at no cost to the taxpayer.
If we do it piecemealed, then we don't get the 40% from the state, and then the taxpayer and the district are up 100% if a boiler breaks or if HVAC goes down, and we have to pay with it from our capital reserves.
This is an investment into the future of our district, into our facilities, and we want to make sure that those facilities are ready for your kids by the time they get there, otherwise, we have to spend a significant amount of money to try to continually contain existing equipment, which is already reached its useful lifespan.
To find out more, people in the town can go to MBTHS.org, and we have a very special dedicated page to the referendum where they can find out more information and read FAQs and look in more detail. We want to make sure that all the way through to all of our schools, your children are in an environment that has safe and clean air, it's comfortable, that the buildings are not falling apart, we want to make sure that they're safe and effective places for your students to learn, whether they're in preschool, elementary school, middle school, or high school. Welcome, March 11.
And that's it for our report. And again, thank you again, Mr. Wen and Dr. Ellis and the team. Great video editing, and I think, I think the materials look very professional, and, you know, just goes to show you what an in-house team can put together.
Yes, a job well done. Thank you all for your collaborative effort. Mr. Wen, nice job up there.
Changing career.
Yeah. All right, great. And at this time, we will move to our student reports.
Hi, hello. So, the week of January 6 to January 10, SGO sponsored our winter pep week. So, Monday was pajama day. Everybody enjoyed to stay in their pajamas on Monday and not have to change Monday morning bright and early when it was dark and cold outside. Tuesday was sports day, so you could wear a jersey, you could wear a sweater that represented your favorite kind of sport. We kind of made it easy this year. And then Wednesday was grout for day, which is kind of a trend on TikTok. You were all gray, so everybody basically was like in sweat sets, so like all different like shades of gray, but everybody was in an all-gray outfit. Then Thursday was our typical class colors, and Friday was our blue and gold day for to honor our winter athletes. The Spirit Cup obviously was won by the seniors once again. What can I say? You know, we just kind of have a reputation. We played multiple games that were interesting. The, there was a foul shooting contest, which started off very rough, and it was like, okay, so who's going to make a basket because it's not working right now? And then we also did a scooter race. Basically, one person sat on a scooter, held two noodles, and then they had a partner who like dragged them, and I can say at least for myself, I got swung across the gym and like took another person out. So, it was very comical for the people watching. Then NHS sponsored Penny Wars that week, and so any penny raised money for the class, and if you put a quarter, a nickel, a dime, or any bills into the bucket, it took away from a class. So, the seniors also won that, and we raised almost $300 for our SGO charity. Then January 16, 17, and 18, The Alchemist Theater Company had their annual theater review. It was an amazing show, seeing all the talent that people had, and it was just really interesting.
And then last week, on Friday, January 24, the Class of 2028 hosted their trivia night, and they raised over $500 for their class. The questions were like a wide range from history questions to food to sports, and it was just a lot of fun. Everyone was with their friends, you brought your food, and it was a great old time. It was mostly teams of students, but there was one team that was a family, and they're the ones that won, I think it was a gift card.
They won by one point.
Yeah, they, so everyone was like, wow, I should have brought my parents. And then this Friday, SGO is hosting our annual talent show. The event begins at 7:00, and we encourage everyone to come. It's always fun. We have some amazing students performing, and if you know somebody, or you know somebody that's performing and you want to help them win, if you come, you can donate to their like bucket, and that goes towards their like, the score, to help them win. And then finally, prom info for juniors and seniors will be released soon. Though the info will be in all of the grade level classrooms, and it's stuff like details for prom, so like the date, cost, and then we also have a presentation being posted about like if it's your first prom or you don't really know what to do, like where you can find corsages and boutonnieres and dresses and stuff like that, so you have like a reliable place to do that.
That's great.
Thank you.
You guys have a lot going on, a lot of exciting things. That's great. Okay, so at this time, we will move to our committee reports. With reorganization comes new committees for us every year, so introducing our new human resources committee, the chair is Dr. Patel. So, Dr. Patel, if you could give us your report.
Thanks, Madam President. The Human Resource Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, January 22 to discuss various personnel topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are retiring or resigning, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. We would like to especially thank Superintendent Ms. Shiroka for her commitment and service to our district over the last decade. While her dedication and leadership will be missed, we look forward to continuing our partnership with her over the next several months prior to her well-deserved retirement. There are new staff and new substitute staff on tonight's agenda, including our new treasurer of district bunnies, as our current one will be retiring at the end of April. We welcome all of these new members to our district, and we look forward to having you work with us here in North Brunswick. As of our committee meeting, any remaining or new vacancies for the 2024-2025 school year continue to be posted and can be found on our district website, social media pages, and posted in each of our buildings. We discuss these vacancies along with upcoming leaves of absences and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term subs, or six teaching periods. There are a few reassignments on tonight's agenda, and we want, we thank our staff for taking these on new assignments. We would also like to welcome Ms. Marcy Marks, a 25-year veteran with special education teacher in the district, as well as an MBTH alumni as the new supervisor of special education at the high school. Ms. Keith has shared that there are currently at least four virtual job fairs coming up this winter and spring, starting in late February, that members of our administrative team will attend as they continue to recruit staff. For teaching positions, alternate route, and traditional routes, candidates are both encouraged to apply. The community, the committee, sorry, the committee also discussed a revised job description for the second position of coordinator of health services, and we had a first reading of revised policies and regulations as related to the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement for Education Law Enforcement Officials. These include 55112 harassment intimidation bullying, 7441 electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds, and 9320 cooperation with law enforcement agencies. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. As Dr. Patel had mentioned, we obviously will be speaking a lot more about Superintendent Shiroka's retirement, but obviously, on behalf of the board, it was definitely information that we were all obviously surprised here, but obviously, very happy for you, happy that you're moving into the next chapter of your life, and we look forward to working with you over the next, you know, five to six months to make sure that we are in the right spot to move forward, and we hope that, you know, the staff, the community, you know, has great trust in us. We obviously take, you know, this very seriously. We have a lot of transitional work to do, and we really just appreciate everything that you've done to set us up to, for success in the future. So, more to come on that, but thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Ali is our new chair of education. Mr. Ali, your report, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The education committee met on January 22, 2025, at 6:00 PM. We have three items that we discussed that are on tonight's agenda, and there are several other district-wide updates that I'll be recording tonight. In the area of assessments and grants, Marcy Chang are the director of accountability and special program, shared information on access for ELL, which is our English language learners, is online testing. All staff and teachers were trained on the software that they use on January 9. Testing is set to begin on February 3, and we will be testing a total of 544 students with an expected end date of March 28, 2025. We also reviewed the MAP growth tests, which helps us see growth and achievement in areas of support throughout the district. Results of this test will be further discussed at a next, at a later meeting. And lastly, the NJGPA, which is the 11th grade graduation assessment, will be held from March 10 and 11, 2025, and there will be delayed openings for MBTHS 9th, 10th, and 12th graders, and messaging will be out shortly for parents and students. And in the area of curriculum technology, this committee received updates from Dr. Johnson, who's our director of curriculum instruction technology, on two items for tonight's agenda, the first of which is the Central New Jersey Computer Science Hub, which is a partnership between TCNJ, and it's going to be on STEM education, which is, the goal is to create equitable access in K-12 school settings, and this grant will improve our STEM offerings throughout the district, and is also going to help our STEM department, because staff will receive free trainings in PD, and we'll be starting with the lower grades and then working our way up upon review analysis of the results. Next, we have a memorandum understanding that's going to be starting, or MOU, starting in 2025 year, 2026, with TCNJ for dual enrollment, and students in AP classes will be able to receive college credits upon completion of courses with a grade of C or better, and those are going to be for select classes. And additionally, the district has done a comprehensive review analysis of our current place regarding the NJSLA to focus on areas of target and improvement. place regarding the NJSLA to focus on areas of target and improvement. Next, we had our first multilingual parent committee meeting on January 2022nd, 2022nd, 2025, at the BOE at 9:30 AM. And this meeting was used to share information, resources, and offerings that all North Brunswick Township school, parents, and all parents and multilingual families can use. At that meeting on 22nd, we had 10 families attend. And during that meeting, there were two teachers who were translating in both English and Spanish back and forth, so it was pretty awesome. And our math task force, which is a group of staff members that were tasked with taking a deep dive into our current math curriculum to identify a new one. And we're currently piloting our new curriculum this year, starting in fifth and sixth grades, and that's going to be starting in February. And upon data collection and deeper analysis, the task force will report back out to Superintendent Shiroka and the district, and the district board over here, to understand what's working and what's may not be working, and what we could do to see how we can make it better. And we discussed a few new courses that are going to be coming for next year at the high school, Introduction to Entertainment Technology, and Honors English, which is going to be titled Race, Class, and Gender. We also reviewed policy number P5460, which is for high school graduation. And this was the first reading. And the policy now includes requirements for high school graduating classes of 25, 26, and 27 to require students or their parents to submit a FAFSA form, which is a financial aid form. And parents will have the option of requesting a waiver. Graduation requirements that are no longer are a part of the law have been removed from the policy. And this policy is state mandated and must be implemented by our district. Lastly, we heard about the following updates and upcoming events and celebrations that are going around district wide. We have our Elementary Counselor Wellness Fair, which will be on February 6th, 2025, at the high school from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We have our 2025 Young Women's Conference in STEM, which is going to be at the Princeton Plasma Lab on March 25, 2025. And this is, this program is hopefully, and the goal is to increase STEM interest in young women. And we have the District Art Fair, which is going to be on March 27th, 2025, at the high school between 5:30 PM and 8:30 PM. And it's going to include art and music. And I want to give a big congratulations to the NJMEA, which is our music ensemble. And they won their all-state ensemble. And we have one student who's a sophomore who was accepted into the orchestra for the Wind Ensemble, and this is an exclusive invite. So he had to audition and, you know, get vetted, and they made it there. So that's really awesome for them. And the last update is at the high school, we received a 2024 AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. And to qualify for that, we need at least 50% of students enrolled in AP Computer Science. At the high school, they were, they had to be female, and we were one of 237 schools nationwide to receive this distinction. And that's all for our Education Committee report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. At this time, we will move to our new leader, Mr. Carter of Business Operations. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Operations Committee met on January 22nd at 7:00 PM. Presentation was made by Mr. Senkowitz, reviewing the audit report. On the agenda this evening, you'll find the following items. Approval related to MBTHS stadium updates for painting, decals, and fencing in Finance Section 3I. Purchase of cafeteria tables for Linwood in Finance Section 3F. And the purchase of dividers for the MBTHS Media Resource Center in Finance Section 3J. We also reviewed policy 8500 related to food services in Policy Section 1A of tonight's agenda. And finally, we received status updates on the Linwood Chiller, which should be completed at the end of the month and fired up starting in April. Middle school roofing updates, John Adams Gym Divider, which will be installed this Friday. Livingston Park paving and traffic flow updates, which we hope to have bids by April 9th, which is my daughter's birthday. And ECC courtyard draining issues, which we've scheduled repairs for this spring. District-wide HVAC control updates, which are covered under our ROD grants are ongoing. And district-wide annual mercury vapor testing, which indicates all of our schools' results meet the allowed parameters.
That's great. Thank you. A lot of these updates that Mr. Carter had mentioned specifically are ones that we've been hearing and are moving along, so that's really great to hear. Thank you. At this time, our last report will come from Mr. Legori. Mr. Legori's new role on our board is kind of a hybrid role. We probably need a smaller title for you, but we'll work on that. But he is currently...
We need an acronym?
Yeah, we need an acronym, another acronym. He will be our liaison for the New Jersey School Boards, Middlesex County School Boards, and also working closely with our town mayor and council. So, Mr. Legori, your report this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored to be taking on that role.
Yeah.
Just a couple of points from the standpoint of the State School Boards Association and the County School Boards Association. First, this past weekend, Mr. Singh completed his new board member orientation, and he went for the in-person option rather than the virtual option, which I think is fantastic. All of us board members should be availing ourselves of the daily email updates that come from New Jersey School Boards. And just a heads up that the next County School Board Association meeting is next Thursday, February 6th. It's virtual only this time around. It starts at 6:45. And we'll be joined by the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, Senator Vin Gopau. Among the topics he will discuss are school funding and the pending statewide cell phone ban. So all board members are welcome to join that call. From the standpoint of the mayor and council, just two quick points. They held their annual reorganization this past month. Some dignitaries were sworn in, including Councilman Socio and Councilwoman Hutchinson. And this year, Councilwoman Guadagnino was named the board's council president. The Department of Parks, Rec, and Community Services held their annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Remembrance Ceremony. There were three human rights award recipients. One was Detective Adrian Ailey. One was Officer Fedor Salvador Romeo. And the third was one of our own staff members, Rahim Byram, who coaches our MBTHS boys basketball team. Not only does he coach the team, he's an MBTHS Hall of Famer for his part on the 1997 MBTHS basketball team. Several of our students participated in that ceremony, including Anushka Vakalagata and John Whitworth from the high school, and our third graders from the Parsons and Livingston Park combined choirs. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, that wraps up our committee reports for the evening. So, Ms., Dr. Patel, would you please take item 12?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Administrative Student and Committee Reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted. Thank you. At this time, we will take a moment to review our agenda for this evening, January 29th, 2025. As previously mentioned in last year's meetings, we receive our agenda way ahead of time. We've had the chance to review it as a board. Any new items are listed in bold or changes are listed in bold on the agenda, but we will go page by page in review. And we will start on page three. And then four and five. Six and seven. Eight and nine. 10 and 11. Pages 12 and 13. 14 and 15. 16 and 17. Pages 18 and 19. And wrapping up on page 20. So at this time, we will have a public session on agenda items only at this time. If there's anyone from the public that would like to come and speak on agenda items only, we ask that you please just state your name, and you'll be given three minutes. Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed. Thank you. Mr. Wen, would you please take item 16 for consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous finance items 1 through 3, policy, and transportation.
Second. I'm going to take roll call on this one.
Okay.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Toak?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions, resolutions are approved and accepted. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we can jump to page 19 on our agenda to item 17. We will, at this time, have a public session on any matter. At this time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to come up and address the board, we just ask that you state your name and you'll be given three minutes. Good evening, Mrs. Pasner.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Good evening to the North Brunswick Township Board of Education. Good evening to the community at large. Before I start, I also want to express my congratulations to Ms. Shiroka on her retirement. I'll save my stuff for tonight as well. My name is Beth Pasner. I am the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. We are the union that represents the teachers and the support staff for the school district. Oftentimes, the relationship between the Board of Education and the local union can be perceived as naturally being adversarial, which can be true, especially when negotiating a contract. However, more often than you would think, there are many times where the Board of Education and the union have shared goals, goals which strengthen our schools and serve to keep our students and our staff safe. The upcoming vote on the referendum is one of those goals. The upcoming referendum strives to address ongoing health and safety issues in our schools. The two questions look to address concerns over HVAC, masonry, updating bathrooms, doors, windows, locks. These are items that are desperately, they're needed to be addressed. Most of our school buildings are close to, and many are already 50 years old. Our HVAC systems have reached their end. And yes, as the video described, you know, and especially at the high school where I personally teach, students bring blankets to class and are in classrooms that are, you know, 50 degrees or less than that. Other times, they're in classrooms that are 80 degrees or higher. And for those in the community, if you don't believe this, ask your children, please. And sure, the administration will put in portable units. They'll attempt to relocate classes, you know, try doing science lab in the commons, right? But these are just temporary fixes. I can speak to my own experience as a history teacher at MBTHS in the spring, last spring. It was so hot in my classroom. Maintenance actually decided to put two portable cooling units in my classroom. And I had relief for about a minute, when, to no one's surprise, a fuse blew and turned off the power in my classroom, plus five others in the park. So we can't keep doing this, is essentially the bottom line. The HVAC needs to be replaced, and this is the opportunity to get something like that done. Our doors, windows, locks, they need to be updated for security, safety, energy efficiency. We have cracks, crumbling bricks. They need repair. Just in order to prevent future costs also from leaks and building damage. Our bathrooms are not ADA compliant. You know, the only way to really fix this is for the North Brunswick community to vote yes on questions 1 and 2 for this referendum. We have this unique opportunity at this moment where we'll come at a zero tax increase for the North Brunswick resident. I mean, aren't our students and staff worth it? And so I do urge the North Brunswick community to vote yes to referendum questions 1 and 2. You are going to hear from other staff members besides me. I know I'm here every month and you, you know, appreciate me coming every month, I'm sure. But we do have other staff members that are here tonight that are going to share their personal experiences in their classroom to show that it is something that is happening across the board, not just in one singular school. So thank you very much to you all for putting forth the referendum, but I do appreciate and hope the community, you know, listens and does vote yes on these two questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
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 Good evening, Superintendent Shiroka and the North Brunswick Township Board of Education. My name is Heather Angeles, and I am here today not only as a staff member in the district, but as a resident as well. Additionally, my two children attended North Brunswick Township Schools. They graduated in 2018. I'm here to express my support for the referendum that will be brought to the township for consideration on March 11. I feel I have a unique perspective as a resident who is a staff member, and I'd like to share that with the community tonight. I have been a physical education teacher in North Brunswick since 2009. I first started at Judd, working there for six years, and then transferred to Parsons. In my many years as a North Brunswick staff member, I have seen a gamut of heating and cooling issues in the gym. In both schools, I taught physical education to my students in both extreme heat and freezing cold temperatures. There were many times that I was trying to teach a lesson while myself and my students were wearing our winter coats, gloves, and hats. That would make sense if we had taken our classes outside, but unfortunately, we were inside the gym. HVAC improvements would allow teaching and learning to take place in a comfortable and safe environment for us all. A persistent problem that I faced in the gym at Parsons is water. When it rains, water pours into the gym from the ceiling that runs down the walls, comes through the vents. Last year, we were very unlucky on our field day, and just as we had started our day, unfortunately, it began before. We tried to keep our indoor events going and keep the day as fun as possible for the students and the staff. About a half hour into our first event, we had water continuously flowing into the gym. Staff quickly acted. We used large buckets to collect the incoming water. We laid out lots of cardboard on the floor to prevent our staff and students from slipping and potentially getting hurt as they were entering and exiting the gym. That is why I was so pleased that an improvement of the masonry in our buildings was included in this referendum. This referendum is not just about the comfort of our students and staff, but it is for their safety as well. As you can see, these are issues that are detrimental to the education of our students. As a teacher, I implore the community to vote yes to both questions. It could make such a difference to our schools. Additionally, when schools are not in good condition, our property values, they decrease. We can have the issues in our buildings fixed with a zero tax increase. So as a resident, I will be voting yes, and I encourage the community to vote yes to both questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is it the third one? Good evening, Superintendent Shiroka. Congratulations. I'm a little jealous.
Thank you.
I'm the North Brunswick Township Board of Education. My name is Candy Hoffman, and I am here tonight not only as a staff member in the district, but as a resident as well. I am here tonight to express my support for the referendum that will be brought to the township for consideration on March 11. I have a unique perspective as a resident who is a staff member, who is a staff member that I would like to share with the community tonight. I have been a science teacher at Linwood School since 2001. I also serve as a school treasurer, MBTS, and as head rep for staff at Linwood. Over the years that I have taught at Linwood, I have seen a number of issues happening in our building that this referendum will address. In the past 25 years, I taught both 6th and 8th grade and have had seven different classrooms. The temperature in each classroom has never been in sync with the rest of the building. It's either been too hot or too cold. Most recently, when the new building was built, I moved out of this classroom, which is now the board meeting room. And I noticed that the windows were not changed in the renovation. They leaked then, and I'm sure they still leak. Every window in this building should be changed, and the heating and cooling system should be updated. Students and staff continue to walk around with their coats on, which inhibited their mobility in the classroom. In addition, the Linwood faculty room toilets are made for toddlers. I feel like I am sitting on the floor when I use them. Please feel free to visit and see them. As you can see, these are issues that are detrimental to the education of our students. As a teacher, I implore the community to vote yes to both questions. Additionally, when schools are not in good condition, our property value decreases. We can have the issues in our buildings fixed with a zero tax increase. So as a resident, I encourage the community to vote yes to both questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Thank you all for coming out tonight and expressing, you know, your support. And that's why this board, you know, has taken the jump to do something like this. We recognize that there are things that need to be done in our buildings. Many of us, you know, have grown up here and have been in those same buildings that you're talking about, so we recognize it as well for our future generations coming up. So thank you for being here. At this time, we will look to close the portion, the public portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed. This session is closed. Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much. Oh, at this time, we'll motion to go into a closed session, whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting, Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One P L nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussions of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matters is to be discussed is as follows. Number one, negotiations. Number two, legal matters. And number three, personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at, at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We can go to closed session. Thank you.